Motion made by Freeholder Duffey, second by Freeholder Petronio. Uh, Freeholders Bartlett, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Motion for the open public meeting law. Uh, we will, we will, we will. Motion by Freeholder James, second by Freeholder Bartlett. Freeholders Bartlett, Petronio, Duffey, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur. All right, folks, we're gonna start the regular meeting here. Uh, motion of the open public meeting law. Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included as annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with county clerk votes in the administration building mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. Freeholders Bartlett, Petronio, Duffey, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFleur. This is an invitation.
Lord, may thank you for once again bringing us here to do the business of the county of the state. We ask that you would guide us forward and give us the insight, the wisdom, and the compassion to do what is in the best interest of all of the residents of this great county and that which honors you most in your name and prayer.
My honor, my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This stand for a moment of silence. Remember, women and women of God who have served the United States of America. Thank you. Motion approved by the minutes, number eleven, number fourteen. Second by Freeholder James, second by Freeholder Bass. Local. Bartlett, yes. Freeholders Bartlett, Petronio, Duffey, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur. Yes, motion to suspend the regular order of business. Second, motion made by Duffey, second by Bass, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Bond ordinance. Bond ordinance number twenty fourteen dash oh one, providing a supplement appropriation of three hundred thousand for various capital improvements granted by the county of Passaic, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of two hundred eighty-five thousand bonds toward those of the county board financing part of the appropriation. Move the open public. Second. Motion made by Bass, local Republican, second by James, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Anyone who should be heard on bond ordinance twenty fourteen dash oh one, please step to the podium, and that's only on the bond issue.
Ellen Delash by forty-seven Clifton Avenue. My question is, why are you bonding for three hundred thousand dollars when maybe you would take it out of surplus?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Delash. Anyone else want to be heard on bond ordinance twenty fourteen dash oh one?
Seeing no one at the close.
Motion made by Freeholder Bass, second by Freeholder James.
That works.
Local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes.
Are you sure or are you Miss Delash, how are you? Welcome back. We have this. Typically, Miss Delash, that's not the prudent way to go to drain your surplus to do capital projects that'll have a twenty or thirty year length. This bond issue is for replacement and repairs of the Camp Hope swimming pool. So, it's just not prudent to use surplus and draw down your surplus.
All right. Motion to adopt bond ordinance twenty fourteen dash oh one. Make that motion. Motion made by Duffey, second by Bass, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Uh, there are no proclamations. Anybody have any reports? The motion.
Move it.
Second. Move by James, second by Duffey, by local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Motion to open the public portion of the meeting. Move by James, second by Bartlett, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step to the microphone, state your name and address. There are three minutes and note that anything you say is a matter of public.
Seeing no one at the. I would never do that to you.
Ellen Delash by forty-seven Clifton Avenue. My question is, I read the legal ads in the paper, and sometimes there'll be an ad for the county, and it gives, I guess, the resolution number, I guess, if it's gonna be rebidded on, and saying, instead of saying what it is, they give a number, and I'm, I don't know what it really refers to in the legal acts. So, that's why I wanna know, why don't they just state what, what the legal ad is all about?
Do you have any questions on the line? Do you wanna address them? Thank you, Ms. Delash. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second made by Duffey, second by.
Leader.
James. Local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes.
Michael, you wanna? Um, this is Delash, I'm Michael Glovan, as you know, Assistant County Counsel, and I think I could answer you as follows. The freeholders on their agendas have sequential numbers on all the resolutions that go throughout the whole year. And in the, in the minutes of the meetings is how it's recorded publicly. So, when they do an ad in the newspaper, it's gonna refer to what was on the minutes that were done by the board. That's why you'll see the number on there. Now, usually, with the resolution, you'll see a description, and the board has instituted that over the last two years, of a description of what the action is all about. So, usually, and if it's not the case, I'll focus, we usually put it in, if you look at the resolutions, if you come in here and you look at them, you'll see there's a description of the action, a summary of what the board's going to do. And what would, and one of the reasons for that was to try to let the public know both when they see summaries or they see an ad in the paper, what, what it's all about, without having to read the whole file.
Thank you, Michael. And also, a little sad news, I wanna express the condolences of the poor and chosen freeholders to Miss Delash, who lost her sister last week, and have regrets on that. She was a very nice lady. Also, I wanted to acknowledge the presence of esteemed Councilman from Hamilton, Councilman Bob Dyer. Welcome. Hope he's not here to yell at us. Delayed. Um, hold on.
I'll move, uh, M. one and two.
Second. Hold on a second.
When you get there.
Got it. Motion made by James, second. Bass, any discussion on that? Local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Uh, motion to amend.
I'll move to add M. forty-seven, M. forty-eight, as, as, as County Council.
Sir, and to amend the fine.
Yeah, we gotta move that. Yeah, the director in, at his discretion does not require.
Got it. All right, motion made by James, as a member, second. Second by Duffey, any discussion? Local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes.
Move the.
Move by James, second, second by Bass, any discussion? Local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes.
Move the personnel agenda.
Personnel agenda, move by Bass, second by James, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes.
Move the bills, sir.
Move by James, second, second by Bass, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Certification payroll. Second, move by James, second by Bass, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. See departmental reports, receive the file.
Move to adjourn.
Next, motion made by James, adjourn, second by Bass, local. Freeholders Bartlett, yes, Petronio, Duffey, yes, James, Laura, yes, Deputy Director Bass, yes, Director LaFleur, yes. Thank you, everyone, for joining.
A record, a record in the media. Record.
Quick, quick, file.
Passaic County is in the heart of North Jersey and on the pulse of the global film It has stunning natural resources, urban, suburban, and rural locations, convenient access within the tri-state area, and state-of-the-art telecommunications. The Passaic County, New Jersey Film Commission was created in two thousand and, the commission has also created a filmmaker's resource guide. It allows location scouts, producers, and directors a snapshot of what Passaic County offers, as well as a list of local contacts throughout the county. Several productions for both the small and large screens have used the county and its communities for their sets. The Sopranos have filmed scenes all over the county, and they have given us rave reviews. Many feature films have been shot in Passaic County communities. Recently, a new film, The House Is Burning, was shot in Wayne and Hawthorne. Move over Hollywood, here's the clip. Even popular rock groups guided by their record labels have come to our county. This is footage of the band Armor Pursuit, Sean and Wayne, for a video of their new The Passaic County, New Jersey Film Commission also provides venues for young aspiring filmmakers who call our county home to improve their skills. The commission sponsors an annual film festival in April, at which cash prizes are awarded to the best high school and college filmmakers.
Such a privilege and an honor to be here today to welcome you all to our first, uh, our first film festival in Passaic County. I'm Deborah Hoffman, um, Director, Director of Economic Development for Passaic County, and our department runs the Film Commission, very dedicated to the badge of experts in the film industry.
Participants get a chance to have their work viewed and critiqued by several industry You all volunteer, the Passaic County, New Jersey Film Commission is hard at work raising the visibility of our county locally and national. Eventually, this will result in more productions within the county and increased economic benefits to the businesses that call Passaic County home. You are contemplating a major or independent production, we want you here. Are you a filmmaker looking for the perfect location? Then Passaic County is for you. Our county is home to sixteen production-friendly municipalities that feature wonderful urban, suburban, and rural locations. Passaic County also has historical and cultural sites, botanical gardens, parklands, and castles. Easily reached, and is thirty minutes from New York City. For more information, call the Passaic County Film Commission at nine seven three eight eight one four four two seven. Passaic County embraces the heritage of the nation, the headquarters of the Revolutionary War, the birthplace of American industry, a center for contemporary art. Come, explore a diverse landscape, the castles and museums, as history unfolds before you. Starting our tour at Morris Canal Park and Nature Preserve, a visitor is struck by the serene natural beauty surrounding him. Now a picture-perfect setting for artists and brides, one tends to forget that this canal was the only one in the country that climbed mountains by use of locks and inclined plains, traveling between the Hudson and Delaware Rivers. This waterway, conceived in eighteen twenty, lined Pennsylvania's coal fields, New Jersey's iron industry, and New York's commercial markets. For a century, it flowed between the Delaware and Hudson Rivers and extended from Phillipsburg to Jersey City. The canal was made obsolete by the railroad, closed to navigation, and abandoned in nineteen twenty-four. The Clifton Historical Commission approached the city council with a defined plan and started the physical labor in April nineteen eighty-six with Troop Twenty-two of the Boy Scouts of America. As work progressed, community service people were used on a regular basis to have water in the former canal once more. At present, nineteen Eagle Scouts have constructed projects in the park. Volunteers have maintained the gardens. The former waterway is now stocked with a variety of fish. More than half a dozen ducks are permanent residents and divide their time between the pond and the canal. It's a bit of history and nature in the middle of a busy city for all to enjoy. The Hamilton Van Wagner House welcomes the visitor to the pioneer homestead that once dotted what was known as the Old Quackinock. With its graceful gambrel roof in red sandstone, the house reflects many of the characteristics of the architecture of early New Jersey Dutch colonists. The Hamilton Van Wagner House represents the ordinary people who toiled and shaped the nation. The farmer down the road, the tradesman in the village, the housewife in her kitchen, the artisan in the shop. All of the anonymous Americans who lived life as we do today occupied in their daily work, their families, the celebration of life's joys and sorrows. These ordinary people communicate to us, their descendants, through simple objects they used in their everyday existence. The spinning wheel, a foot warmer, a crude basin, an elaborately decorated pitcher. Each room in the house reflects the different lives of the various families who called it home. Throughout the year, authentically dressed volunteers describe early nineteenth-century life as they guide guests through the house. On Sundays, visitors can see early cooking skills demonstrated at the Open Hearth. Cultural events and craft programs, typical of the period, as well as lectures and other events, are held at the museum. Our ancestors' lives do touch us. They reach out from the past through their possessions, now on exhibit at Hamilton House. Lambert Castle, originally known as Bell Vista, was built in eighteen ninety-two as the home and showplace of silk manufacturer Catalina Lambert. The fifty-three acre estate originally included the main house, a gatehouse, a carriage greenhouse complex, and formal Italian gardens. In eighteen ninety-six, Lambert added an art gallery and observation tower. Lambert was born to working-class parents in England in eighteen thirty-four. At the age of seventeen, he and a younger brother came to America. Lambert settled in the Boston area, starting out as a bookkeeper. Lambert gradually bought a partnership into the firm Dexter Lambert. Its base of operation was relocated to Patterson, which in eighteen sixty-seven was emerging as a world-class silk manufacturing center. To accompany his rise in fortune, Lambert built a new home befitting his station as one of Patterson's leading industrialists. Bell Vista was constructed of sandstone quarried from Garrett Mountain. The interior of the castle was organized around a three-story open atrium space called the Court, where Lambert displayed many of his fine European-American paintings. His art collection included works by Rembrandt, Renoir, Courbet, Monet, and Blakelock. The rooms surrounding the gallery were the entry hall, formal dining room, drawing room, music room, study, and breakfast room. These rooms were used mainly for entertaining. The upstairs rooms were used by the family and guests, and the third-floor house servants' quarters. The interior decoration of the castle reflected the eclectic taste of the Gilded Age. In nineteen fourteen, Lambert was forced to mortgage his estate and art collection. In nineteen sixteen, several hundred pieces of art were auctioned off at the Plaza Hotel in New York City by American art galleries, now Sotheby's. Lambert was able to pay off his creditors and managed to live out the remainder of his life comfortably at the castle until his death in nineteen twenty-three, just several weeks shy of his eighty-ninth birthday. The castle was purchased and renovated for park system use in nineteen twenty-eight, and a three-story atrium closed. In nineteen thirty-four, the Passaic County Historical Society established its museum in the castle, which presently serves as headquarters for the Passaic County Department of Parks and Recreation, the Passaic County Historian, and the Historical Society. Passaic's Hungarian Folk Museum is located at the Reed Library on Third Street. The museum, in two rooms on the second floor of the public library, features an eclectic collection of artifacts of Hungarian history and culture. "Our intention is to keep and preserve the Hungarian culture and folklore," says the curator. Most of the museum's donations come from local Hungarian emigres, their children and their grandchildren. The museum features colorful ornate embroideries, wood carvings, regional costumes, photographs, books, and newspapers, including a Hungarian language daily, first published in Passaic shortly after the turn of the century. The exhibits are celebrations of tradition. The American Hungarian Museum, Passaic, was established to preserve, exhibit, and cultivate Hungarian culture in one of the largest Hungarian communities in the United States. The museum specializes in community memorabilia, valuable folk art, folk crafts, costumes, embroideries, and examples of fine art. The museum also hosts special exhibits, lectures, performances, video presentations, and workshops. Patterson can be called aptly "the cradle of American industry." It was near the Great Falls of the Passaic that plans for an industrial metropolis were developed at the end of the eighteenth century. The Lenny Lenape first found a home along the banks of the Passaic, and the Dutch settlers came here as early as sixteen seventy-nine. However, it was not until the young American nation charted its course for independence that the industrial power potential of the Great Falls was realized. Critically situated between the New York and Philadelphia markets, the Great Falls was considered an ideal site. In seventeen ninety-one, then-Secretary of the Treasury Alexander Hamilton helped promote a private state-chartered corporation, the Society for Establishing Useful Manufacturers, S.U.M. It was through Hamilton's influence that the directors of the S.U.M. located the town of Patterson at Great Falls. The new town was named for William Patterson, then-governor of New Jersey. The corporation planned to utilize the falls by supplying water power through a three-tiered raceway system. The city produced textile machinery, revolvers, steam locomotives, silk, Holland submarines, Wright aircraft engines, and many more products. The S.U.M. continued its corporate existence well into the twentieth century. In nineteen forty-five, its property assets, charter rights, hydroelectric power plant, and raceway system was sold to the city of Patterson. A visit to the Great Falls Historic District would be incomplete without a stop at the Patterson Museum, located in the restored Thomas Rogers Locomotive erecting shop. Owned and maintained by the city of Patterson, the museum was organized in nineteen twenty-five. Its first exhibit, displayed in the Assembly Room of the Danforth Public Library, consisted of natural history items donated by local residents. Two years later, the growing collection was moved to the adjacent carriage house of former Mayor Nathan Barnett, and within a few years, became one of the state's largest mineral collections. Persons with an interest in the industrial age will enjoy looking over the dying, winding, warping, weaving, and jackard loom products that gave Patterson its worldwide reputation in silk and textiles. The museum has the finest collection of Patterson-made firearms in East Coast institutions. During his tenure in Patterson, Samuel Colt produced approximately two thousand eight hundred and fifty pistols. Changing exhibits complement the museum's permanent displays. For several years, the museum had featured the work of local and metropolitan artists. Individuals who enjoy historical research will also find ample documentary resources on city history, which include the papers of submarine inventor John Philip Holland, as well as his submarine, original manuscripts, and a photograph collection consisting of over fifty thousand negatives and prints. The Broadway Gallery of Passaic County Community College is a vital part of the Cultural Affairs Department's program. The gallery, which began in nineteen seventy-nine, sponsors a full schedule of monthly exhibits by a broad range of national and international artists, as well as by local artists. Recent art exhibits include an extensive retrospective exhibition by WPA artists, exhibitions by Edward Ruga, Kimberly Camp, Zoltan Hecht, Ben Jones, Alicia Morrie, and many other artists from diverse cultural backgrounds. The Broadway Gallery features several important works of art that are part of the college's permanent collection. A life-size metal sculpture of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by noted African-American artist Henry Simon is on display at all times. A sixty-five-foot mural by artist John Traynor depicts the history of Patterson. In addition, the permanent collection contains a signed lithograph by Ben Sean of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., an unextended loan from the collection of Cynthia Reese, five paintings by African-American artist Kimberly Camp from her Here I Talk to My Ancestors series. The gallery features monthly exhibitions of contemporary art, with an emphasis on multicultural and ethnic artists. The American Labor Museum advances public understanding of the history of work, workers, and the labor movement in the United States, with special attention to the ethnicity and immigrant experience of American workers. It is headquartered in the historic Bato House National Landmark, nineteen hundred and eight home of Pietro Maria Bato, immigrant silk mill workers from northern Italy. It played a major role in the reform of the American workplace. In the winter of nineteen thirteen, more than twenty-four thousand men, women, and children more than 24,000 men, women, and children marched out of Patterson, New Jersey's silk mills, calling for decent working conditions, an end to child labor, and an eight-hour day. From January to July, constant mass arrests and hostile city authorities threatened the safety of the strikers and their families. Pietro Bato offered his home as a meeting place for the strikers. Elizabeth Gurley Flynn, Upton Sinclair, and other champions of the cause of labor spoke from the second-floor balcony to workers of many nationalities. The American Labor Museum works to remember the sacrifices of these and other workers who have advanced the cause of working people. The museum has sponsored a variety of activities, including conferences and cultural programs. It maintains a collection of artifacts illustrating the lifestyle of immigrants and working people's involvement in the labor movement. This landmark structure contains period rooms, gardens, and contemporary gallery space for changing exhibits. The Ben Shahn Gallery at William Patterson College is a contemporary gallery consisting of three gallery rooms accommodating 1,000 visitors per year. Entering Ben Shahn Gallery, a visitor walks through a sculpture garden made up of large and small pieces. The three galleries feature changing-group exhibitions based on a theme or unifying principle, and one person shows. The Ben Shahn Gallery is representative of tri-state-area artists and alumni. The exhibits are curated by the gallery director and by guest curators from among the art department faculty. All the mediums taught within the department are represented in the exhibition schedule, since the gallery is an important resource for both students and faculty in the department: painting, sculpture, photography, printmaking, textile design, ceramics, and furniture design. Here we see an alumni exhibit which reflects those careers for which students are trained: packaging, and award-winning computer animation. The gallery sponsors lectures and gallery tours. Of particular interest is Art at Lunch, which is a series of fourteen thematic lectures offered on Thursdays, presented by gallery docents and art faculty. The Di Mansion, Washington's Headquarters Museum, is a Georgian manor house built in the 1740s by Dirk Di, whose Dutch grandfather came to New Amsterdam before 1641. Dirk's son, Tunis, served his county and state in an official capacity throughout his lifetime. During the Revolutionary War, he was Colonel of the Bergen County Militia. This important military position brought Di in constant communication with General George Washington. Because of its strategic position relative to the British-occupied New York City and its accessibility to food and forage, the Preakness Valley was chosen by Washington as a site for the encampment of his army. In 1780, Washington's headquarters were established at the Di home. Washington departed Di Mansion for various campaigns. In November 1780, he and his troops left for their winter encampment. Historical research disclosed that hundreds of letters and orders were actually written at the mansion by and on behalf of General Washington and directed to senior officers, as well as to the Continental Congress. Many famous men passed through the portals of the Di Mansion besides Washington. They include Nathaniel Green, Alexander Hamilton, Marquis de Lafayette, Lord Sterling, and Anthony Wayne. The Di family owned the house until 1801, when it passed into other private hands. In 1930, the Passaic County Park Commission purchased the estate as part of its acquisitions for Preakness Valley Park. After restoration work was completed, the museum was opened to the public in 1934. Today, it is owned and operated by the Passaic County Department of Parks and Recreation and is open for public enjoyment year-round, where one can follow in Washington's footsteps. The Van Riper Hopper House was built in 1786 by Yuri Van Riper, when he married Polly Burdan. Remaining in the Van Riper family, the house was bequeathed to Yuri's great-granddaughter, Mary Ann Van Riper, who married Andrew Hopper in 1872. On July 6, 1964, the house was officially dedicated as the Wayne Township Museum. The Van Riper Hopper House is a fine example of Jersey-Dutch architecture. It is a one-and-a-half-story building with five first-floor rooms and four upstairs bedrooms. Typical of the Jersey-Dutch style, the house faces south and receives full benefit of the sunlight. There are six fireplaces in the house. Some of the floors are original wide-pine planks. Open ceilings are supported by heavy hand-hewn beams. A mortar of clay, straw, and hair holds the walls of stone in place. Claster on the inside walls is an inch thick. The house is furnished with many fine antiques. The museum complex includes the Van Dine House and the Archaeological Laboratory. The Archaeological Laboratory contains thousands of artifacts excavated from local sites, many dating back to Indian tribes who roamed the area thousands of years ago. Situated adjacent to the point-view reservoir, the museum, with its spacious grounds, beautiful flower beds and herb gardens, offers a peaceful oasis in which to relax and enjoy a picnic. The New Jersey Botanical Garden at Skylands in Ringwood State Park is the centerpiece of a property assembled by Francis Lynn Stetson from Pioneer Farmsteads in the Ramapo Mountains. Stetson named his country estate "Skylands", and here he maintained a stylish mansion of native granite, a working farm with more than thirty outbuildings, gardens, and a vast lawn that also served as a nine-hole golf course. The gardens cover an extensive area. The terrace gardens behind the manor house and the flower gardens across Maple Avenue are an easy and delightful walk. Skylands was sold in 1922 to Clarence Mackenzie Lewis, an investment banker and trustee of the New York Botanical Garden. Lewis decided to make Skylands a botanical showplace. The Stetson House was torn down, and it was replaced by a Tudor mansion of native granite that we see today. Lewis engaged the most prominent landscape architects of his day to design the garden. Most of the trees now framing the house were planted at that time, including the magnificent copper beeches. Lewis stressed symmetry, color, texture, form, and fragrance in his gardens. For thirty years, Lewis collected plants from all over the world and from New Jersey road sides, resulting in one of the finest collection of plants in the state. In March 1984, Governor Thomas Kean designated the ninety-six acres surrounding the manor house as the state's official botanical garden. Included among the annual garden are the Crab Apple Vista, the Perennial Border, the Summer Garden, the Winter Garden, the Magnolia Garden, the Azalea Garden, and the Octagonal Garden. In October 1984, Skylands was visited by John D. Bond, keeper of the gardens of England's Windsor Great Park, who manages all the garden holdings of the British Royal Family. Bond was so impressed by the tremendous variety of mature plants that on his departure, he took with him seeds for germination in England. Established in 1740, Ringwood is to industry what Williamsburg, Virginia, is to politics. It produced munitions for every major armed conflict, from the French and Indian War to World War I. The Ringwood Iron Mines operated intermittently from the 1920s until they ceased operations in 1957. Martin Ryerson began construction of the present-day Ringwood Manor after he purchased the Ringwood properties in 1807 from the American Iron Company. The small, federal-style home he built is a fraction of the current structure. Eventually, the property was sold to the firm of Cooper Hewitt and Company. Mr. Hewitt married Amelia Cooper, his partner's sister, in 1855. In the spring of 1856, they made Ringwood Manor their permanent home. It was during the Hewitts' occupancy that the house was expanded and acquired its current Victorian appearance and saw entertaining on a grand scale. As a wealthy businessman, Hewitt had the social responsibility to entertain his peers. These responsibilities increased during his political career, which encompassed the Democratic National Chairman, a one-term mayor of New York City, and congressman from New York. The country home became known locally as the Second White House. The present structures reflect a period from 1854 to 1936, when the Hewitts resided at the manor and used it as their country estate. One can visualize Hewitt as the lord of his manor house and 33,000 acres of property. He relaxed from the pressures of business and the congenial company of family and friends. In planning the gardens, Hewitt was inspired by the classical designs used for the palace grounds at Versailles. Today, Ringwood Manor houses a splendid collection of furnishings: Hudson River School paintings and prints and lithographs reflecting the personal preferences of a family estimated to have amassed the sixth-largest personal fortune in America. We conclude our tour in the northern reaches of Passaic County's Highlands region at Long Pond Iron Works. This rugged country, stretching from Pennsylvania to New York State, holds rich deposits of iron ore. Long Pond Iron Works was founded in 1766 as a colonial iron-making community. This colonial furnace, presently in ruins, produced iron to make armaments for the Continental Army during the Revolutionary War. Robert Erskine, iron master at that time, also served as surveyor general to General George Washington. Here we see the Civil War-era furnaces, complete with casting house. Built by Abraham S. Hewitt and Peter Cooper around 1862, this industrial complex produced iron used in making gun barrels for Union troops during the Civil War and was partly responsible for the Northern victory in 1865. This site's existing buildings and the remains of the industrial complex testify to more than 100 years of technological evolution and to Long Pond's contributions to local, state, and national history. The three structures seen here are among the surviving residential buildings at Long Pond Iron Works. Each is part of the Registered Historic District and is targeted for restoration. Visit Passaic County, where a past rich in history combines with a future rich in promise.
The Future. It all starts with determination, dedication, and a dream. Since 1970, Passaic County Technical Institute has shown our young people just how bright the future can be. PCTI, winner of three prestigious national awards, is located in Wayne on a beautiful 55-acre campus. It is a fully accredited comprehensive high school serving all of Passaic County. We offer students 13 specialized schools and academies and worlds of opportunities. Our teaching staff and faculty receive continuous training in order to stay ahead of the ever-changing needs of the 21st century. Our diverse student body consists of over 2,000 talented young adults from surrounding communities. PCTI is much more than just a cutting-edge career and technology high school. Our award-winning students and faculty, commitment, and pride make our school a unique and exciting place to obtain an excellent education while learning the necessary skills to excel. From our academic to our career and technological programs, to our sports and activities, we're here to show you that...
We've got the spirit!
My name is Samantha Matos. I'm enrolled in the Academy of Medical Arts. I'm in HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America. I'm in Student Council Interact, and I'm also a member of the Literary Society. I want to go to college. I've been accepted to William Patterson. I'm going to major in nursing. It's going to take me a while, but I want to be a pediatrician. I chose PCTI because I believe that it was the only school that could give me the opportunity that I wanted and provide me with the education that I wanted to succeed in the future. Through the academy, I was able to become a CNA. And as a CNA, I can go work in a nursing home. I can work in a hospital. You know, I can do private care. So I have the option of going to work and having that education, or I have the option of going to college. One thing that PCTI has taught me about myself is that they try to teach you that not everything is easy. Not everything is going to be handed to you, and that you have to work to get where you want to go.
The future is bright for our students at PCTI. They are here because they want to learn and be the best that they can be.
My name is Anthony Gogler, and I'm a senior here at PCTI. I'm in the Academy of Medical Arts. Some of the activities that I'm involved in HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, National Honor Society, cross-country indoor track and spring track.
My name is Tila Gaffner, and I am a senior. I'm in the School of Communication Arts, and I major in Advertising Art and Design.
I'm involved in National Honor Society. I'm vice president of Student Council Rotary Interact, the gifted and talented program. There's volleyball, bowling, and spring track and field.
My name is Eleanor Gonzalez, and I'm a senior at PCTI. I'm in the School of Applied Technology, majoring in drafting. Also, it has taught me to be disciplined, to persevere, to pursue my goals.
PCTI students have opportunities available to them that aren't found in many high schools. Not only do our academic courses challenge our young men and women, our career and technology courses go beyond preparing them for life after high school. courses go beyond preparing them for life after high school. Placing our students in real-life job situations allow them to experience the American workforce in the classroom. We provide all of our students with the accommodations they need to achieve a high-quality education. Special-need students have resource-centered classrooms and are mainstream throughout the school to help ensure their success. Under the school-wide "Proud to Be an American" campaign, students learn the true value of American ideals. Patriotism and community service are essential elements of a PCTI education. And 73% of our hard-working students go on to further their education after graduation at top universities, colleges, and trade schools throughout the country.
Going to school here is really like another home, another family environment.
It's warm and friendly.
It's a great place to be in.
There's something for everybody in this school.
PCTI presents worlds of opportunities to students. The opportunity to work with technologically advanced machines, such as the latest family of Pentium computers, and more than 1,650 other computers for our students. Our students receive hands-on experience right in the classroom from all 13 specialized schools and academies. In our ITV studio, students can even be linked up via satellite in real time to places all over the world. Passaic County Technical Institute offers a variety of exciting courses. Students may take honors and advanced placement courses, and even university-level courses earning them college credits while in high school. Excitement doesn't just take place in the classroom. Our student activities and sports programs allow students to represent the school while having fun and learning the importance of teamwork. From our state championship football programs and student government, to our ROTC program, there's something for everyone at the home of the Bulldogs.
My name is Dr. Sandra Ellis. I am a dentist, and I have a private practice in Rochelle Park, New Jersey. High school is a major developmental component in shaping who we are and who we're going to be. PCTI helped me determine what career was going to give me the most fulfillment and enjoyment. I had an advantage going into dental school. While most others were embracing the field of dentistry for the first time, it almost seemed as if it was second nature. The opportunities to compete in the field of your choice and to test your skills greatly developed my motivation and what I wanted to do in life. I haven't seen anything like this before. You walk in, there's a bank, there's a restaurant. It keeps getting better and better. I would have never, ever been where I am today if I haven't come to a PCTI.
Dreams come true at PCTI. Our teachers, our leaders, these are the people our students look to for help and simply look up to. At PCTI, our faculty and staff take great pride in guiding each student to graduation and beyond.
I think that the instructors at PCTI are highly qualified and dedicated professionals who ensure quality education in their students.
Really push you to the limit to do your best, and I really like that.
The teachers at PCTI are devoted to their work, and they are always there to help you.
They really care about you.
I would definitely recommend PCTI to any student who is interested in attaining a quality education.
Extensive training and dedication keep our teachers in touch and up to date with today's technology and demands. Being a teacher or staff member at PCTI means so much more than educating. Taking the time to be there for each and every student and to be a role model is an everyday part of the job. PCTI is ready to take all of our students to greater heights and achieve their ultimate dreams.
My ultimate dream is to become a psychiatrist and open my own practice.
I plan to open my own web design business someday.
Get a master's in art therapy.
My dream is to be on Broadway because I love to perform.
My ultimate dream is to open my own automotive service shop.
My ultimate dream is to become a certified public accountant because I like to work with people.
My future plan is to pursue a career in drafting, either in the architectural or engineering field.
To be an inspiring teacher.
To become a financial analyst.
I'm going to major in biology, and then continue on to med school, ultimately becoming a plastic surgeon.
To become a CEO in a big corporation.
I want to become a pastry chef.
My ultimate dream is to become an FBI agent dealing with terrorism and homeland security.
To study musical theater.
To be the owner of an upscale salon.
I'd love to be a corporate lawyer.
My ultimate dream is to open up my own business.
I'd like to major in political science, and eventually become a lawyer, and at some point get involved in politics.
Yesterday, the dream began. Today, the expansion is a reality. Tomorrow, our enrollment will increase as PCTI prepares to welcome an additional 1,000 students. Dreams definitely come true at PCTI. Many new and exciting changes continue to take place, but one thing that remains constant is that...
We've got the spirit!
For further information and answers to all your questions concerning Passaic County Technical Institute, call us at (973) 790-6000. You can also visit us on the web at pcti.tech nj.us.
All right, folks, we're going to start the regular meeting here. The motion of the open public meeting was...
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this being specified in time, date, and location, including annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with county clerk votes in the administration building mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, yes. Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes. Please enter the indication.
Lord, we thank you for once again bringing us here to do the business of the county of Passaic. We ask that you would guide us, Lord, and give us the insight, the wisdom, and the compassion to do what is in the best interest of all of the residents of this great county, and that which honors you most in your name and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Do you remember women and women of God who have served the United States of America? Thank you. Motion approved in minutes, number 11, number 14. Second, freeholder James, second by freeholder Bass. Roll call.
Bartlett, yes. Freeholders Bartlett, Petronio, Duffy, James, yes. Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Motion suspended by the rule of business. Second, motion made by Duffy, second by Bass, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, yes. Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes. Bond ordinance number 2014-01, providing a supplement appropriation of $300,000 for various capital improvements gained and acquired by the county of Passaic, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $285,000 bonds, ordinance of the county for financing part of the appropriation.
Move the open public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Bass. Open the public hearing. Second by James, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Anyone wishing to be heard on bond ordinance 2014-01, please step to the podium, and that's only on the bond issue.
Ellen Delash by 47 Coyston Avenue. My question is, why are you bonding for $300,000 when maybe you would take it out of surplus?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Delash. Anyone else wanting to be heard on bond ordinance 2014-01?
Seeing no one at the podium, we close.
Motion made by freeholder Bass. Second by freeholder James.
That works.
Roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, yes. Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Are you sure, right, Ms. Delash? How are you? Welcome back.
Missed me.
We have missed you. Typically, Ms. Delash, that's not the prudent way to go, to drain your surplus to do capital projects that'll have a 20- or 30-year length. This bond issue is for replacement repairs of the Camp Oaks swimming pool. So it's just not prudent to use surplus and draw down your surplus.
All right. Motion to adopt bond ordinance 2014-01.
Make the motion.
Motion made by Duffy, second by Bass, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
There are no proclamations. Anybody have any reports? Communications? The motion?
Move it.
Second. Move by James, second by Duffy, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Motion to open the public portion of the meeting. Second. Move by James, second by Bartlett, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step to the microphone, pick your name and address. There are three minutes, and don't get anything you say in matter of public.
Seeing no one at the podium. I would never do that to you.
Ellen Delash by 47 Coyston Avenue. My question is, I read the legal ads in the paper, and sometimes there'll be an ad for the county, and it gives, I guess, the resolution number, I guess if it's going to be re-ditted on, and saying, instead of saying what it is, they give a number, and I'm, I don't know what it really refers to in the legal acts. So that's why I want to know, why don't they just state what the legal ad is all about?
There is a question on the mic. Do you want to address that?
Thank you, Ms. Delash. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Seeing no one at the podium, move to close the public portion.
Second made by Duffy, second by...
Here.
After, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Ms. Delash, I'm Michael Glovan, as you know, Assistant County Counsel. I think I could answer you as follows. The freeholders on their agendas have sequential numbers on all the resolutions that go throughout the whole year. And in the minutes of the meetings is how it's recorded publicly. So when they do an ad in the newspaper, it's going to refer to what was on the minutes that were done by the board. That's why you'll see the number on there. And usually, with the resolution, you'll see a description, and the board has instituted that over the last two years, of a description of what the action is all about. So usually, and if it's not the case, I'll focus, focus, we usually put it in, if you look at the resolutions, if you come in here and you look at them, you'll see there's the description of the action, a summary of what the board's going to do. And one of the reasons for that was to try to let the public know, both when they see summaries or they see an ad in the paper, what it's all about, without having to read the whole file.
Thank you, Michael. And also, a little sad news, I want to express the condolences of the four chosen freeholders to Ms. Delash, who lost her sister last week, and my regrets on that. She was a very nice lady. Also, I want to acknowledge the presence of esteemed Councilman from Hamilton, Councilman Bob Dyer. Welcome. Hope he's not here to yell at us.
Delayed. I'll move M1 and 2. When you get there, Parker.
Motion made by James, second by Bass. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Motion to amend.
I'll move to add M47 and M48 as Assistant County Counsel.
And to make a...
Yeah, the director in open at his discretion does not require one.
All right, motion made by James, as a message. Second. Second by Duffy, any discussion? Roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Move the highest, move the...
Motion made by James, second. Second by Bass, any discussion? Roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Move the personnel agenda.
Personnel agenda moved by Bass. Second by James, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
Move the bell, sir.
Move by James, second. Second by Bass, roll call. Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes. Certification payroll, second. Move by James, second by Bass, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, yes. James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes.
See departmental reports, received file.
Move to adjourn.
Next, motion made by James, adjourn, second by Bass, roll call. Freeholders Bartlett, yes. Petronio, Duffy, James, Laura, yes. Deputy Director Bass, yes. Director LaFleur, yes. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
A record, a record in the American record.
Sixteen miles west of New York City lies Patterson, New Jersey, a city of 150,000 inhabitants living within about nine square miles. That makes it one of the most densely populated cities in the United States. Small cities like Patterson are home to about 31 million Americans. Water is the primary reason why most major cities locate where they do. Boston, New York, Philadelphia, Charleston, New Orleans, San Francisco, St. Louis, Pittsburgh, and Kansas City are just a few American examples of this worldwide phenomenon. Most have been port cities of trade and commerce since their founding. Patterson... Patterson is at once typical, yet unique. It is not a port city, and manufacturing, not trade and commerce, have been its mainstay. Instead of a river, lake, or ocean harbor as reason for its strategic location, Patterson is where it is because of these, the Great Falls. In 1680, two Dutch missionaries visited the Great Cataract and wrote all field accounts of its grandeur. About this time, 14 Dutch families bought the Akwakonk Track from the Leni Lenapi Indians. Included in this deed were about 4,000 of Patterson's almost 5,600 acres, and the first white settlement in this area became a reality. Water diversion upstream has lessened the falls' power somewhat. At this hydroelectric plant, more water is diverted before it reaches the falls to produce electricity for up to one quarter of the city. Even so, after heavy rains, the ceaseless flow and power of this 77-foot-high, 280-foot-wide waterfall is still an inspiring sight. It was certainly that for Alexander Hamilton. As Secretary of the Treasury, he became perhaps the first nationally prominent American to give a commercial endorsement. Keenly interested in manufacturing, he became consultant and spokesman for the Society for Establishing Useful Manufacturers, founded in 1791. Elijah Budino and the other directors named the city after New Jersey Governor William Patterson, which may have been the reason state lawmakers granted them tax exemptions and partial state funding. The S U M directors came to the falls on July 4th, 1792, and bought 700 acres above and below the falls. Patterson thus came to existence on the 4th of July, and the directors resolved to build at once. The directors hired Pierre L'Enfant, the French architect engineer who planned Washington, DC, to supervise the construction of factories for America's first planned industrial city. Peter Colt succeeded L'Enfant in February 1793 and completed a raceway system to power the mills. Water flowed from the Passaic River, through a wooden dam above the falls into a reservoir, passing through the raceway to a spillway and water wheel, providing power for operating a mill. After leaving the mill, the water flowed back into the river through a drainage channel. Controlling a cheap energy system and much valuable property, the Society for Useful Manufacturers began to flourish as a power developer and real estate firm, as cotton manufacturers soon located in Patterson. A middle raceway was added and then a lower raceway as well. Roswell Colt made additional modifications in 1838, including elimination of the reservoir and building a new masonry dam further downstream. Patterson, the cradle of American industry, became the cotton town of the United States. Paper manufacturing Patterson was also important, including production of currency paper for several Latin American countries. Prior to 1807, all paper was made in sheets, but Patterson Paper Mill owner Charles Kinsey invented a process to make paper in continuous rolls, the first of numerous firsts from Patterson. In 1831, the 102-mile Morris Canal opened, linking the factories to the Pennsylvania coalfields as a new energy source powered the Industrial Revolution. A year later, the first of eventually five railroad lines linked the city with regional markets for its finished products. In 1835, Sam Colt patented his revolver, and in this gun mill on Van Houten Street, manufacturing began of his peacemaker, known as the Gun That Won the West. About 4,500 Patterson Colts were produced. In 1837, another industry was born in Patterson with the production of the Sandusky. Throughout the rest of the 19th century, four great Patterson locomotive works, Rogers, France, Swinburne, and Danforth Cook, produced 9,000 locomotives and 3,000 steam snowplows. Used throughout the North, Central, and South American countries, these locomotives also played an important role in the nation's westward expansion. When the Golden Spike linked the eastern and western portions of the transcontinental railroad in 1869, the two steam locomotives at the scene were both products of Patterson. Engine number 299, standing outside the Patterson Museum, saw extensive duty in the Panama Canal, first hauling construction materials and then freighting passengers for half a century. In the mid-19th century, favorable federal tariff laws brought a boom to silk manufacturing. This industry took root in Patterson, just as its cotton textile industry moved out to New England. From 17 small silk factories in 1860, the industry grew to over 300 silk factories and dye shops by 1910, employing over 30,000 workers. Now receiving almost 2/3 of all the world's silk for manufacture, the Patterson area had overtaken France, calling itself the Lyon of America. In fact, it was the silk city of the world. The city attracted skilled textile workers from Europe and the Middle East, who worked as spinners, warpers, weavers, operatives, dyers, and loom fixers. And out of this industry came other Patterson firsts, such as John Ryle's discovery of how to put silk on spools, creating the first silk thread used on sewing machines. In 1873, Patterson silk manufacturers introduced the Jackard process of silk weaving. Jackard cards are strips of heavy cardboard with perforated holes to create a designed pattern. Hundreds of these cards are stitched together in bundles and fed into the head at the top of the loom to control the warped threads. Another significant Patterson first came in 1878, when schoolteacher John Philip Hollen invented the world's first practical submarine, his iron-plated one-person boat. Tested in the Passaic River just above the Raceway Dam, led to the successful launching of the Fenian Ram in 1881, the forerunner of all submarines built since then. With so much industrial activity, it is probably no coincidence that Patterson was also the site of the first permanent commercial telephone exchange in 1879. The city, highly successful as a manufacturing center, was the fastest-growing city on the east coast throughout the 19th century. Businesses of all types flourished in this boom city, where industry and commerce were symbiotic partners. Breweries, mostly German, were another major city enterprise throughout most of the 19th century, until prohibition. One of the more successful silk manufacturers was Catalina Lambert, an English immigrant at age 17. In four years, he was partner in the Boston Silk Firm that had first hired him as a $4-a-week bookkeeper. Three years later, at age 24, he was sole owner of the firm. Soon thereafter, he opened the first of his silk mills in Patterson, beginning a meteoric rise into enormous wealth and power. In 1892, he conceived and built his brownstone and granite castle residence on Garrett Mountain, with a commanding view of the city below. He named this imposing structure Bella Vista. In a wonderfully romantic action, he provided his wife, now in her 50s, with an elaborately carved oak frame to set off her elegant stairway descents. Carved with fruit and flowers, it was also a gallant tribute for the silk-clad women party guests as they descended. Lambert's employees lived in crowded tenements in Patterson's working-class Dublin district, next to the factories easily visible from his windows. However, Lambert's lifestyle, like that of Patterson's other elite, was one of opulent splendor. From overhead gasoliers set off by colored glass and wrought iron frames to Spiroonyx columns and marble statues and floors. Exquisite chandeliers lit the rooms, which were warmed by a variety of fireplaces. Marble with relief sculpture. Rosewood with black and gold decoration. Tile. Ornate ceilings, paneled walls, fine furniture, and fine china, and much more, made Bella Vista a showplace. Most impressive was Lambert's vast art collection, which charmed President McKinley on a visit in 1898. And so impressed Vice President Garrett Hobart that he exclaimed, "We have here the nucleus of an American Louvre." The art collection is long gone, auctioned off by Lambert in his later years. But on a visit, one can still experience some of the beauty of the castle, now home to the Passaic County Historical Society and County Parks Department. Patterson has also experienced major calamities. Early Sunday morning, February 9th, 1902, fire broke out in a trolley car barn on Van Houten Street. Fierce winds carried burning embers eastward to all parts of the business district, making firemen helpless to stop the raging inferno. The fire burned all day Sunday, through a 26-block area destroying 456 buildings spread out over 54 acres. Pattersonians returned to survey the ruins. They found that the fire spared nothing. The city had been dealt a devastating blow. As offers of aid poured in from all parts of the country, Mayor John Hinchcliffe declined, saying, "Patterson can take care of her own." Signs of business as usual quickly went up as Pattersonians put action to the mayor's words. Yet even as the city began initial steps to rebuild, nature dealt another section of the city a crippling blow. Two weeks after the fire, the Passaic River began to rise. With an average flow of 10,000 gallons per second, it crested on March 2nd to almost 160,000 gallons per second. Along with the raging waters came huge ice floes carrying destruction wherever they went. Bridge after bridge collapsed. Houses were swept away. Other homes and factories sustained heavy damage. Floodwaters inundated stores and neighborhoods. Fortunately, the gates to the Raceway System held firm, preventing destruction of a large part of the city's industry. Gradually, the floodwaters receded, and Pattersonians, reeling from back-to-back natural disasters, began the monumental task of rebuilding the city. And rebuild they did, despite another major flood and destructive tornado in 1903. Soon, the city was a bustling metropolis again, its mills working, its commerce and retail trade thriving. Its locomotive industry was in decline, but silk manufacturing still made Patterson a prosperous city. In 1913, Patterson endured another crippling blow. Workers at the Dowerty Mill went out on strike in opposition to installation of a four-loom system. The strike spread, involving 24,000 workers and closing down over 300 mills. Leaders from the International Workers of the World, the Wobblies, came to Patterson. Carlo Tresca, Elizabeth Gurley Flynn, Adolf Lessig, and Big Bill Haywood urged workers to hold firm. Violence and arrests were common. When the strike ended six months later, neither side had won. The workers were destitute. The four-loom system remained, but the mill owners were nearly bankrupt, and the age of industrious rule ended. The 1920s saw Patterson's fading silk industry superseded by airplane engine manufacture. Wright Aeronautical Corporation came to Patterson and became the city's main industry. Charles Lindbergh's solo flight across the Atlantic in the Spirit of St. Louis was powered by a Wright Whirlwind J5 engine built in Patterson. A great many other airplane engines were built in Patterson through the 1940s, both for civilian and military aircraft. Throughout the first half of the 20th century, Patterson was also a major shopping center. Like most cities before suburbanization and shopping centers became the preferred middle-class lifestyle, Patterson was a strong regional city, whose stores, services, and entertainment regularly lured nearby residents. Recreational activities were plentiful within Patterson's borders. For the city's elite, the annual Masonic Ball, beefsteak dinners, or summer outings were enjoyable events. The Orpheus provided musical evenings, and the Patterson Opera House an ongoing program of entertainment. The Swiss Germans participated in the gymnastic and cultural activities of the Turnvarine, while other ethnic groups found leisure pastimes through organizational outings and other events. The circus coming to town was an event for everyone. Performances were always scheduled in the evenings after the factories closed. Daredevil Tightrope Walkers attracted crowds to the falls, such as George Dobbs in 1879 and Philippe Petit in 1974. An amusement park at the top of the falls and a swimming school at its base were places where one could go regularly. Sunday afternoons in the city's parks were a longstanding tradition, whether picnicking, strolling through the formal gardens, wading in a pool, or boating on the river. When movies came along, theater after theater opened throughout the city, most of them situated within blocks of one another. They would remain enormously popular for half a century, before yielding to cinema complexes out on the highways. An impressive number of famous people have called Patterson home. Besides inventors like Colt and Hollen, Patterson also produced legendary heroes like Sam Patch, who, after successfully leaping from the Great Falls, became the only man to go over Niagara Falls successfully without a protective device. Garrett Hobart, mayor, state legislator, and US senator was Vice President of the United States under McKinley. Hobart's sudden death while in office brought the president to Patterson for his funeral. Death came to Malcolm X and King Umberto the First of Italy at the hands of two Patterson assassins, Thalmann Hayer and Angelo Bressi. In stark contrast, Patterson also turned out two prominent poets in William Carlos Williams and Allen Ginsberg. Albert Saban, inventor of the oral polio vaccine, and Larry Doby, the first black baseball player to integrate the American League, also called Patterson home. Comedian Lou Costello, shown here posing for famed Patterson sculptor Gaetano Federici, was also a native son. Spanning many generations and societal changes, home to many diverse peoples, cities such as Patterson offer an abundance and variety of architectural beauty. Government buildings, for example, reflect both the nation's 1890s values and Patterson's prosperity. This neoclassical limestone building with Corinthian pillars is the county courthouse. is the county courthouse. Built shortly after the 1893 Chicago World’s Fair when cities copied ancient Greek and Roman buildings, it is arguably the best-designed courthouse in the state. Next to it is Patterson’s old post office, built at the same time and now a courthouse annex. This stone-and-brick work with gargoyles resembling Butchers Hall and Holland is one of only two pure Flemish Renaissance buildings in the United States. City Hall, built in 1894, set the standard for other cities as well as for the quality of buildings in its business district. The main building is based on the design of Michelangelo’s Senate in Rome and the clock tower based on that in Lyon, France. In the 160-foot tower is a two-ton clock with a 500-pound pendulum. Danforth Memorial Public Library was designed by Henry Bacon, who then used this building as his model for designing the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, D.C. Throughout the city are numerous examples of architectural splendor. Looking up past the street-level facades of stores frequently rewards one with sights of rich details of construction design from another time. Churches offer other examples of a city’s architectural beauty. St. John’s Cathedral, for example, is a beautiful Gothic building built by and for Irish immigrants in the 1870s. Its spaciousness and impressive medieval decor provoke awe among first-time visitors, surprised at finding such grandeur and beauty within a small, gritty city. The interior of another Catholic church, St. Michael’s, offers beautiful testimony to its role as a spiritual center for Italian immigrants. Renaissance-style paintings on the ceiling and walls give the sanctuary a strong sense of its congregation’s heritage. In contrast, the simple elegance of First Presbyterian Church belies the fact that many of the city’s elite worshipped here since its founding in 1804, including numerous mill owners, five mayors, a governor and U.S. Attorney General, and a vice president. The stained-glass windows in this 1852 structure are by Louis Comfort Tiffany and include one rather different artistic rendering than what one might expect to find in a Presbyterian church. St. Paul’s Episcopal Church, established in 1817, is now in this granite church built in 1895 modeled after Durham Cathedral in the British Isles. It contains 12 windows, three mosaics, and hymnbooks all commissioned by Louis Comfort Tiffany. Located in the city’s east-side section, this Anglican church once attracted as parishioners others of the city’s elite living in nearby mansions. Churches have always been an important part of Patterson’s history. The city attracted many diverse peoples and with them their religions: Baptists, Methodist Episcopal, Dutch Reformed, Congregationalist, Christian Scientist, Presbyterian, Jewish, Catholic, and others. With no skyscrapers to block one’s view, the tall steeples and smokestacks created the image that was truly the personality of this city. From a distance, they towered over the cityscape, illustrating what was important here. The factories gave Patterson its economic strength and the churches gave the people their spiritual strength. Looking at Patterson from atop Garrett Mountain near Lambert Castle, one can easily spot its natural and architectural landmarks. They offer vivid testimony not only to the city’s legacy from the past, but to its present and future potential as well. Vistas, however, don’t give a complete picture. People, not buildings, comprise a city’s strength. As in virtually all American cities, immigrant and minority workers have played major roles in building Patterson and sustaining its economic vitality. They built the buildings and streets, labored in the factories at the machines, worked in the many retail stores, provided other necessary services, and shopped at the many establishments along the city’s streets. No longer a major manufacturing center, Patterson is now a city of diverse economic activities with its largest employer, St. Joseph’s Medical Center. Like most cities, Patterson today is beset by problems of poverty, homelessness, drugs, and crime. It struggles with its finances, schools, and image. But there is a toughness about this city. Each time it has been knocked down, it has bounced back. Where shuttered stores marked its business district in the 1970s, thriving stores exist today. Three years ago, it won an urban award for the most new construction starts in one year. When fire has destroyed older structures, new ones are built and the merchants continue business. Old abandoned mills have been refurbished. Their exterior is preserved, while inside, they have become modern loft apartments, some of them specifically reserved for artists and musicians, creating a unique ambiance to the district. Others have become office buildings, residences, and schools. The Falls and its adjacent factory district are now a national historic landmark and attract visitors from all over the world. The city’s sense of community responsibility is perhaps best illustrated by the actions of its churches. St. Paul’s Episcopal Church doesn’t merely live in its glorious past, but reaches out in its present. It is an integrated church, offering shelter to the homeless and numerous outreach programs to the community around it. A former convent by St. John’s Cathedral is now Evis Shelter, with a halfway house upstairs and downstairs serving over 300 meals daily at this site and 200 other meals at satellite centers. Where littered, empty lots and slum buildings once stood, area churches have contributed labor and materials through Habitat for Humanity to build several dozen quality, affordable homes that low-income families can own. Any city is a mosaic of small worlds, a composite of many neighborhoods. Scattered throughout Patterson are low-income areas, working-class residential districts, middle-class locales, and the Manor Hill section where its large, exquisite mansions can be found. In some areas, only traces of a previous ethnic group’s presence can be found as it is replaced by another group. Elsewhere, the older group either maintains a strong presence or coexists in the same locale with a newer group. Hope and labor has been Patterson’s motto since 1869 and the guiding principle of its people in the past and present. The city’s future is as unknown as that of its children, but Patterson’s past resiliency suggests all things are possible, that dreams can become realities.
The Passaic County Film Commission provides liaison services for industry productions, locations, facilities, companies, and individuals. These services encompass location scouting assistance, augmented county and site research, and we act as facilitators between production companies, communities, and governance. We publish a film production resource guide and also host an annual film festival in which Passaic County is promoted as the prime New Jersey destination for film, music videos, and still photo productions. Producers, directors, production companies, pre- and post-editors, and talent find everything they need in Passaic County. Our newest television and sound recording studio just opened recently in the historic city of Patterson at the MMC Panasonic HGTV Studios located at St. Joseph’s Children’s Hospital. This state-of-the-art facility will provide a worldwide broadcasting capabilities as well as host local productions within the complex. The Passaic County, New Jersey Film Commission has five main goals: to attract new productions, films, and TV commercials to our 16 film-friendly communities; create and continually update a database of locations; provide production team with a database of local resources; provide guidance to production companies as we work with local municipalities; provide a commission ambassador to facilitate production crew during filming. You will find Passaic County close to home, within 30 minutes from anywhere in the metropolitan area, and we are film-friendly to your cast and crew. You will find a pro-business climate, an abundant workforce, great locations, and a very sound infrastructure. Some of our premier locations include Patterson’s Great Falls, just designated as the Patterson Great Falls National Historic Park. These magnificent waterfalls, which played a seminal role in shaping American history, are the largest in the Northeast after Niagara Falls, a place where Alexander Hamilton and General George Washington stopped for lunch during the American Revolutionary War. The surrounding mill buildings and the Valley of the Rocks are very unique attractions that provide a step back in time. Lambert Castle is a historical museum built in 1892 by Lambert as a personal residence and an office to oversee his growing silk empire in Patterson and has hosted many television productions. There are many other unique locations such as the Clifton Art Center, the Long Pond Iron Works, the Patterson Armory, the South Shore Marina, Greenwood Lake, the Colt Gunworks, many quarries, and the New Jersey Botanical Gardens. The Passaic County Film Commission is the first point of contact for the entire county. Here you will find specialized staff who will work with you in every aspect of your assignment, from print photography to feature films and everything in between. We know as a major studio, indie cinema production company, or photographer, you can work anywhere in the world. Once you film in Passaic County and share this unique experience and the cooperation of the people involved, you will return many times for your productions. We welcome you here. If you can see the future, Passaic County, New Jersey is the location for your next film. Please give our commission a call and get your passport for your next production agreement. We can be reached at 973-569-4720. The Passaic County, New Jersey Film Commission. Deborah Hoffman, Director.
The Future. It all starts with determination, dedication, and a dream. Since 1970, Passaic County Technical Institute has shown our young people just how bright the future can be. PCTI, winner of three prestigious national awards, is located in Wayne on a beautiful 55-acre campus. It is a fully accredited comprehensive high school serving all of Passaic County. We offer students 13 specialized schools and academies and worlds of opportunities. Our teaching staff and faculty receive continuous training in order to stay ahead of the ever-changing needs of the 21st century. Our diverse student body consists of over 2,000 talented young adults from surrounding communities. PCTI is much more than just a cutting-edge career and technology high school. Our award-winning students and faculty, commitment, and pride make our school a unique and exciting place to obtain an excellent education while learning the necessary skills to excel. From our academic to our career and technological programs, to our sports and activities, we’re here to show you that... We’ve got the spirit!
My name is Samantha Matos. I’m enrolled in the Academy of Medical Arts. I’m in HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America. I’m in Student Council Interact, and I’m also a member of the Literary Society. I want to go to college. I’ve been accepted to William Patterson. I’m going to major in nursing. It’s going to take me a while, but I want to be a pediatrician. I chose PCTI because I believe that it was the only school that could give me the opportunity that I wanted and provide me with the education that I wanted to succeed in the future. Through the academy, I was able to become a CNA. And as a CNA, I can go work in a nursing home, I can work in a hospital, you know, I can do private care. So I have the option of going to work and having that education, or I have the option of going to college. One thing that PCTI has taught me about myself is that they try to teach you that not everything is easy. Not everything is going to be handed to you and that you have to work to get where you want to go.
The future is bright for our students at PCTI. They are here because they want to learn and be the best that they can be.
My name is Anthony Gogler and I’m a senior here at PCTI. I’m in the Academy of Medical Arts. Some of the activities that I’m involved in HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, National Honor Society, cross-country indoor track and spring track.
My name is Tila Gaffner and I am a senior. I’m in the School of Communication Arts and I major in Advertising Art and Design. I am involved in National Honor Society. I’m vice president of Student Council Rotary Interact, the gifted and talented program. There’s volleyball, bowling, and spring track and field.
My name is Eleanor Gonzalez and I’m a senior at PCTI. I’m in the School of Applied Technology, majoring in drafting. Also, it has taught me to be disciplined, to persevere, to pursue my goals.
PCTI students have opportunities available to them that aren’t found in many high schools. Not only do our academic courses challenge our young men and women, our career and technology courses go beyond preparing them for life after high school. Placing our students in real-life job situations allow them to experience the American workforce in the classroom. We provide all of our students with the accommodations they need to achieve a high-quality education. Special needs students have Resource Center classrooms and are mainstream throughout the school to help ensure their success. Under the school-wide “Proud to Be an American” campaign, students learn the true value of American ideals. Patriotism and community service are essential elements of a PCTI education. And 73% of our hard-working students go on to further their education after graduation at top universities, colleges, and trade schools throughout the country.
Going to school here is really like another home, another family environment.
It’s warm and friendly.
It’s a great place to be in.
There’s something for everybody in this school.
PCTI presents worlds of opportunities to students: the opportunity to work with technologically advanced machines such as the latest family of Pentium computers and more than 1,650 other computers for our students. Our students receive hands-on experience right in the classroom from all 13 specialized schools and academies. In our ITV studio, students can even be linked up via satellite in real time to places all over the world. Passaic County Technical Institute offers a variety of exciting courses. Students may take honors and advanced placement courses and even university-level courses earning them college credits while in high school. Excitement doesn’t just take place in the classroom. Our student activities and sports programs allow students to represent the school while having fun and learning the importance of teamwork. From our state championship football programs and student government to our ROTC program, there’s something for everyone at the Home of the Bulldogs.
My name is Dr. Sandra Ellis. I am a dentist and I have a private practice in Rochelle Park, New Jersey. High school is a major developmental component in shaping who we are and who we’re going to be. PCTI helped me determine what career was going to give me the most fulfillment and enjoyment. I had an advantage going into dental school. While most others were embracing the field of dentistry for the first time, it almost seemed as if it was second nature. The opportunities to compete in the field of your choice and to test your skills greatly developed my motivation and what I wanted to do in life. I haven’t seen anything like this before. You walk in, there’s a bank, there’s a restaurant. It keeps getting better and better. I would have never, ever been where I am today if I hadn’t come to a PCTI.
Dreams come true at PCTI. Our teachers, our leaders. These are the people our students look to for help and simply look up to. At PCTI, our faculty and staff take great pride in guiding each student to graduation and beyond. and beyond.
I think that the instructors at PCTI are highly qualified and dedicated professionals who ensure quality education in their students.
Really push you to the limit to do your best, and I really like that.
The teachers at PCTI are devoted to their work, and they are always there to help you.
They really care about you.
I would definitely recommend PCTI to any student who is interested in attaining a quality education.
Extensive training and dedication keep our teachers in touch and up to date with today's technology and demands. Being a teacher or staff member at PCTI means so much more than educating. Taking the time to be there for each and every student and to be a role model is an everyday part of the job. PCTI is ready to take all of our students to greater heights and achieve their ultimate dreams.
My ultimate dream is to become a psychiatrist and open my own practice.
I plan to open my own web design business someday.
Get a master's in art therapy.
My dream is to be on Broadway because I love to perform.
My ultimate dream is to open my own automotive service shop.
My ultimate dream is to become a certified public accountant because I like to work with people.
My future plan is to pursue a career in drafting, either in the architecture or engineering field.
To be an inspiring teacher.
To become a financial analyst.
I'm going to major in biology, and then continue on to med school, ultimately becoming a plastic surgeon.
To become a CEO in a big corporation.
I want to become a pastry chef.
My ultimate dream is to become an FBI agent dealing with terrorism and homeland security.
To study musical theater.
To be the owner of an upscale salon.
I'd love to be a corporate lawyer.
My ultimate dream is to open up my own business.
I'd like to major in political science, and eventually become a lawyer, and at some point get involved in politics.
Yesterday, the dream began. Today, the expansion is a reality. Tomorrow, our enrollment will increase as PCTI prepares to welcome an additional 1,000 students. Dreams definitely come true at PCTI. Many new and exciting changes continue to take place, but one thing that remains constant is that...
We've got the spirit!
For further information and answers to all your questions concerning Passaic County Technical Institute, call us at (973) 790-6000. You can also visit us on the web at PCTI.TEC.NJ.us.